We'll call to order the October meeting, the October 1st meeting of Districted and Board of Education. Call the board please.
Bill White.
Here.
Julia Beckman.
Here.
Deb Boyle.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Nitsi Kupka.
Here.
Keith Mattoon.
Here.
Terry Pavicich.
Here.
Okay, we have everyone here. Let's rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're here tonight for the October 1st workshop meeting. First item on the agenda, I believe, is all about learning. We're students' perspectives from South High. Mr. Bill, who is yours?
Good evening. This evening, I've asked three students to come, and so I'm going to introduce Andrea Fogarty, Alan Raznick, and Jimmy Cruz. These three individuals are part of our anti-bullying program. They're helping to develop it for South High, and so they have quite a bit of information to share with you about how their plans are proceeding.
Hi, my name's Andrea, and like Mr. Bill said, we're from Donners Grove South, and we are the directors, or three out of the four directors, for our new anti-bullying program that we have started in the school, also known as Join the Movement, as we have titled it. And how we got the idea for this program is, last year, we kind of became aware that bullying was a problem at South, and there was different forms of bullying going on, and through the media and through the news, we kind of realized that we wanted to take an initiative in the school, and wanted to really get an action started to stop bullying in our school. And we had heard about Hinsdale Central, and they do a skit at their school, and their program is called Break Down the Walls. And they put on a 30-minute skit, and they go to different middle schools and through their high school, and they put on a skit for them all about bullying, and it's a really great skit. So we invited them to come to DGS last year, and through teacher recommendations, a bunch of South students, I think there was maybe 100 students, maybe 60 to 100 students, were invited to come and watch this Hinsdale Central performance. And those students that were invited down were then invited to be, or we invited back to a second meeting. And at that second meeting, we discussed if this would be a good program that we could maybe start up at our school, or different ideas that we could do around this program to start at our school. And we decided that we really liked the program, and we thought it was very moving, and we thought it really could make an impact on the students in the community, and the students at South. And so we decided to come up with a program of our own that sort of mimicked what Hinsdale Central did, but make it kind of our own idea, and really shape it to the needs of DGS and to what we felt our community needed more. And so then, we made the kids that came down to watch the performance, we all became leaders, and then there was different directors that were picked, and us four, and then our other director who wasn't here, Christine Flynn. We kind of came up with the group, and we started talking to the kids about what they wanted to see done within the group, and we started planning everything.
Hi, I'm Alan. I'm a senior at Donner South. And kind of how this started was, when, as Andrea said, we were, the four of us minus Christine, were lucky enough to be chosen to become the program directors for this new program that South has started. Now, we're kind of the guinea pigs with this because it's never been done before at South High. So what was so interesting to us was, we didn't know where to start. So, like Andrea said, we got the kids involved, we asked them what they wanted to see, and the four of us got to pick what our skit was going to be about. I chose cyberbullying because my sophomore and junior year, I was just so revolved around bullying in general, that I was really excited to get started with this program, and so I thought cyberbullying was a huge one, because that's what I see the most in our world today. So that's where I got started, at least. And how we played it out was, throughout the summer, we met a good, like, us four, we met probably six times over the summer to discuss and help write each other's skits, and just what we thought was good versus bad, like, what should and should not be said in the skits, and then we assigned roles. Within those roles, we picked who in our small group would best assist those roles. And so, in our own small groups, we have from, I think I have six, to 20 skit members in each group. I have a smaller skit, and like Andrea's and Christine's are some of the bigger ones. So over those six times over the summer, we did meet twice with everybody, which was probably all 60 people involved in this, I want to say, and we kind of played it out a little bit to see how it would go. And just a couple weeks ago, we showed Mrs. Kristen Borman, Mr. Walshrock, and Mr. Aldworth at South, and Mrs. Klug, just to see, like, how well we have developed, or what we had done over the summer, and we showed them all of our skits, and we showed them, God bless you, and we showed them all of, like, what we had accomplished, and basically how we were going to run this, and what else they wanted to see change-wise, and what we thought was going to make the biggest impact on South. Our goal was that we just wanted to, obviously, we are the guinea pigs of this, and so we wanted to make as big an impact as we possibly could.
My name's Jimmy Cruz. I'm a junior at Donners Grove South, and my skit deals with abuse directed at sexual orientation. As Join the Movement draws closer to being performance-ready, we have big goals. We have something special here that we're starting. In our attempt to maximize the effect of this movie performance, we look forward to performing it in front of the entire sophomore class at DGS in March. After that, we look forward to performing it at middle schools with an adapted skit that might be a little more age-appropriate, and then other high schools in the area. Eventually, we want it to be a statewide-recognized program. As the program expands, we look forward to being able to include more positive role models in the Donners Grove South High School community. As our seniors graduate, we'll have three more directors next year, and we look forward to just, you know, making this one of the bigger programs at South, and one of the bigger programs in the state. We have, you know, a very strong skit. It's very powerful, and we look forward to bringing our message to as many as possible. If you guys have any questions, we'd be very excited to answer them.
Are there any plans to videotape your skits and put them on the web, or put them on cable access or anything?
You know, we haven't really discussed it, but that's honestly something we could really bring up, because that doesn't honestly sound like a bad idea whatsoever, because if we gave the opportunity to not only show, like, I mean, just if it was to be put on, like, the school's website, that would probably be a good idea. And like Jimmy said, we were going to show sophomores. Me and Andrea and Christine talked about it last night. We were thinking about showing all four classes of high school, freshman through senior, because we really want this to make the biggest impact as possible, so.
I have one question.
Yes.
How will you know that you're making an impact?
Through feedback. We're gonna, after every performance, hopefully, we'll get some, and we'll ask for some, like, from teachers and from students, like, we'll probably pass out a quick questionnaire, like, email, whatever.
I know when we first went to see the Hinsdale Central performance, they passed out a sheet at the end, and like, a survey didn't get our feedback on what we thought was really good about the program, what could we change, different things we liked, different things we didn't like, and we turned those in, and we kind of, the teachers gathered the data on that, just get the feedback from our school, see what we liked about it.
Yeah. Just after our practice performance, which was two weeks ago, I mean, this is a rough skit, half the people are in costumes, you know, some people are still learning their lines and so on. After, I mean, my skit was deals with sexual orientation, kids that were participating in other skits, listening, you know, said that they were, you know, struggling with their sexual orientation, came up and said, wow, that's going somewhere, that can make a difference for me. And I mean, that's first, you know, it's even ready.
That's great.
How long are your segments? Is, there's four different segments?
Yeah. Each skit is-
Eight to 10 minutes.
Eight to 10 minutes. They're all run on different topics, and from each topic, they are transitioned into the next. And so they're roughly eight to 10 minutes each, because we wanted to, kind of like, short and sweet, to the point, like, we wanted to make it long enough that it could be, like, so people could see what we're trying to say, but short enough so they don't get bored.
And we split the group of 60 up into four different groups, so that we each worked, but then at the end, we all come together in one large group, so we each have our own individual skits, and then the entire group comes together at the end to really put the final message across to the audience.
Oh, so there's all 60 of you are in-
In the final stage.
Yeah. In the skit.
And as we transition out, every single kid that's on that stage will say something in the microphone. So, everybody will have their own little, because like, some, I know Jimmy's skit is all acting-based, and I, me, myself, and Andrea's, and I'm not, I don't remember about Christine's, but ours have dialogue. So, it's really wide-set and kind of different, but they seem to be good so far.
It's very interesting to see, is, you know, it's four different directors, we all have, you know, very drastically different messages and opinions on each topic. So it's interesting to see, you know, the drastic opinions presented. I mean, they're all very strong opinions, and, you know, they're going to have a great effect, and, you know, for different people, because we all have four different ideas, but at the end, it all comes together, and, you know, it shows we're one group, we have one mission in the end.
It is a really young group nonetheless. I mean, there's a lot of, we have, we do have a couple, I don't think we have any freshmen. We do have a couple sophomores and some juniors, and mainly seniors, but for such a young group of kids, like, it's played out so far really well. They're all really lenient, so it's been working out really well so far. So we just hope it does for the remainder of our year.
Well, I'd like to see it when you present it.
We'd love to have you see it. Like you see it, as many people as possible.
Okay, do you have a further question?
I would like to say one thing, that because bullying has been such a large issue in high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools as well, a project like this does fall into our PBIS category as well, as our universal intervention. So that would be one way in the future that we could see the impact of a program like this, because it is part of our office disciplinary referrals, that we could see if there was a decrease in bullying, it would be a great way to see the success of the program. So I'm excited to see what happens in the future, so good luck to you guys.
Thank you, thank you. I am actually one of South's PBIS directors, me and the, our other one, she's not involved in, Join the Movement, but her name is Joanna Domansky, and we've talked about, like, her and our librarian, Ms. Bukowski, and myself, we've talked about kind of, I don't know if you ever, if any of you have ever heard or read the book or the movie, Join, not Join the Movement, Paid Forward. That's kind of what, that's kind of the effect we kind of want to have here. We kind of want to have the Paid Forward effect, like, we saw it from Hinsdale South, so now we're starting it, and we're hoping that another school will start it and call it their own thing, like Andrea said. Hinsdale Central called it, Break Down the Walls, and we came up with Join the Movement, and so we're hoping that if we do show another high school, they'll take it and create it and mold it to be however they see it necessary.
That's wonderful. Very good.
Sounds fabulous, absolutely marvelous. Thank you. Any other questions and comments? Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, turning to our workshop agenda, the first item is for a student achievement data presentation.
Thank you, Mr. White. Every year, we compile a number of different data sets about our student performance that we use to evaluate the progress of the school district. There was a time several years ago, when primarily, we were looking at Prairie State Achievement Exam data. However, a couple of realities hit. One is that we'll never reach a point where 100% of our students meet expectations on a given day on that exam. Ergo, if we only use that information, it would look like we're perpetually failing. Additionally, we have put a lot of emphasis on some other metrics that are important to us, the ACT test, Advanced Placement Test generally, and also, we've been studying the last couple of years, a new index that measures growth between eighth grade and junior year Prairie State Achievement Exam, sometimes called E-Pass data, sometimes called GEM score. And we think that's a very important part of our work, because that actually shows the value we have added over three years of high school. So unfortunately, in a perfect world, we would have presented this information in July, at the time of the State of the District Report. We don't get the information in time most years to do that, so we are presenting it tonight. Our presenters are going to be Dr. Minor, who will present the district data, Mr. Bill for South, Mr. Kasek for North. We are in the essence of time. We are trying, we are purposefully not going to go over every piece of information, because some of it you already know. We are going to review a couple pieces that you probably don't know. Certainly, answer any questions about anything that you wish to talk about. The goal is to do this in 15 minutes. I'll be surprised if we do that, but it's not going to be 40 minutes either. 20 is probably fine. No pressure, Dr. Minor.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McDonald. And now, well, you already have a copy of the PowerPoint, so that should tighten things up, but I think it's important to recognize that the reality is that only 11, less than 2% of all high schools in the state made AYP. That 85% of meets exceeds actually was a state waiver. It should have been 92.5, but the states got a waiver from the feds to maintain that 85% from the previous year. So when I talked to a lot of other high schools across the state, there was only one general enrollment high school that, in the Chicagoland area, that had made AYP. The others were from highly selective magnet or prep schools, schools with, there was one graduating class of 45 students that had made AYP. So, you know, in comparing apples to apples, I think it's important to recognize, certainly, we did, on the sidebar, you'll see there that our, the white subgroup had made AYP in reading and mathematics, and Asian had made it AYP in mathematics district-wide. And for the class of 2013, actually, the meets and exceeds percentage had been an increase of .5% in reading from the previous year, and .19 in mathematics from the previous year. Again, to highlight the differences, as you can see, you know, we're looking over the previous year, but there are different cohorts of students, and kids come in, class to class, there's variability. Overall, you look at the initial student characteristics, and that can make a determination of how well the student tends to do, and I'll talk about that, too, in terms of the GEM score, that growth from entry measurement. And then certainly, the smaller the subgroups, they have an even greater challenge to meet and exceed those levels from class to class. So recognizing that we're not comparing apples to apples, and yet that's the way the system is set up. These are four primary pieces that you should be very well familiar. Dr. McDonald has noted that these are our measurements in defining achievement, so I'm not going to belabor that piece, but there will be data sets regarding each of these points that we will be talking about today. This is data, or these are data, excuse me, from ACT. This is from the graduating class of 2012, so these are last-year seniors, and you'll note, please note, there is a dip, but the scale is .5%. That still shows, though, that we are above the state and national averages. Again, we, as subgroups graduate, where the students enter makes all the difference in the world. So if a class comes in entering lower than another class, they have to grow at a higher rate. But we still want to continue to push the envelope and have that on an upward trend. Again, if you look back from 2002, the 10-year increase is quite substantial, it's over This is a telling slide, because it talks about how we move students, where they come from. We want them to score above that 20 piece, because that's that note for college and career readiness. So as we continue to move more students into higher scores of math and reading, that gives them that entry ticket into college, university, and workforce. So again, this shows a positive upward trend. This is a very exciting slide, because we talk about Prairie State and ACT Day One, but this talks about how the district has worked very hard, the teachers, the staff, to get more students into advanced placement, because the more rigorous the curriculum, the better success rate that students have in college and career. You'll note that not only have the numbers increased, but also the percent of students earning threes, fours, or fives, the score that usually gets college credit, it's been the highest in 10 years. That's exceptional work done by our teachers, our departments, and our administration to get more students into the most rigorous levels of courses. With regard to, these are district interventions that we're going to continue to maintain. You'll notice that there are numbers and letters in boxes, and those are referenced as per the strategic plan. We wanted you to see how our interventions do interface with those. So we are continuing to review how our system of supports are taking effect. This year, we are doing literacy progress monitoring for freshmen and sophomores. We've included sophomores this year, as well as those at-risk students. We're looking specifically at the integrating of online math support and interventions with the math interventionists, because we realize with Common Core coming along, we want to make sure that students have access to that more difficult curriculum. And certainly, having said that, those habits of mind in Common Core, mathematics, English, and I will extend into science, too, the manners of learning, teaching students how to learn, are some essential district interventions that we are putting in place for this year and will continue. Those all relate to those strategic goals that you'll see referenced there. The Read 180 findings, again, I had referenced that during the State of the District Report in July, but we are looking at ways of helping those students who do have Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention needs, and we want to continue to advance them along. Without that, that level of growth would be very, very hard to make up, so that's a very focused intervention.
Can you go back, Tudy?
Yes, sir.
In the Read 180, someone look at that and say, well, 56 out of 93 had a year's growth in reading by the end of the year. Why is that exceptional?
Well, for the types of students that we're looking at, without this kind of focused, detailed, double-backed intervention, the chances are of them having any growth at that level are next to none. Additionally, there are those students, in order to get the most from this type of intervention, there are certain number of sessions in which they need to participate. So while students might come into the program midway through the year, they're still having growth, but they wouldn't have had as much success as those that are doing that consistent year-long piece. But I think in the data that I presented in the summertime, we had even, our high flyers, they call it, had, some students had three, even four, years of growth, too. These are simply averages across district.
That's impressive.
The, I'm not going to take time to go through these. These are some of the things that were referenced last year, but we are continuing with these building-level interventions, because these are the types of things that we feel are making a difference for students, not only with regard to reading, with regard to parent intervention, with regard to PSE assessment prep, with regard to mathematics. So these are some things that we will and continue to support. Many of these are supported via our Title I federal funds as well. At this point, before Steve gets started, I just want to reference, you'll see there's some percentages on there with explored ACT growth. That's a statistic that I just wanted to make sure I took some time to explain. As Dr. McDonald had noted, it's very important for us to know where students come in, because that gives us some clues as to how far they should advance. And so rather than put a point value, we want you to go up five points, we want you to go up six points, we decide, the manner in which it's measured is called the GEM score, and that's the growth from entry measurement. So if a student comes in at a lower level, say a 13, they would still be expected to grow at least around 35% of where they started. Summarily, if you have a student coming in at maybe an 18, we'd still want that student to grow at 35%. We don't want to say only some students should grow and others shouldn't. Ultimately, we'd like to raise all students up to that 20 and above level, and that's what we're working very hard to do. So as you'll see on these upcoming slides, that percentage of GEM growth going up means that we are doing precisely that, precisely that, we're moving more students ahead of where they come in, their entry point, to where they leave, or the PSAE score at the end of day one, so that's junior year.
But if the lower student comes in, though, that limits their capacity vis-à-vis someone else who comes in higher.
Correct. Correct.
It's not a perfect linear relationship.
No, no. And we're looking at data in a different way to give us the sense of where that sweet spot is, because the higher students come in, they tend to grow at greater lengths. What we're trying to do is try our very best to equalize it for students who come in lower, so they have that fighting chance.
Our goal on this is for people to understand the equitable kind of growth that we expect of students across all the areas. And so when you talk about point score, it's less meaningful to every single group than it is to talk about what's the average growth over time. And that's why this particular statistic is easier for everyone to understand, and we use it in a variety of ways. I think the thing to notice about the different class scores, as you see them on the screen, is really that this is not representative of the student's highest ACT score at the end. This is representative of the PSAE Day One score, whichever year that is. So those are three junior classes, and as you can see, their scores are pretty consistent over time, even though they're different cohorts of students. So the expectation to make at least 35% growth from entry in eighth grade explore to ACT Day One is consistent over time, pretty much, for those three classes. And we have data that goes back a little further than that, but not much, because the GEM score was something that we didn't calculate years ago, when we first started this kind of assessment. We exclude from that calculation students who don't have all the scores. So we test kids four times in the process, so if you don't have all four assessment scores, we're not going to include you in the overall average. And this is an overall average score, okay? And so I think that, you know, that particular, we can move on to the next one. I think that particular piece of information is important, and we want to look at it, but we have some other data points, as you've seen earlier. We're very pleased with our data in terms of AP enrollment and AP test score. We, you have seen reporting in the past that talks about the number of students enrolled in AP classes. It's more important to look at the number of unique enrollments, because many of our students take two, three, four, five AP classes, in addition to being enrolled in honors classes, which we also track. But we're very pleased that about 25% of our students, approximately, take AP courses throughout their, at least one, throughout their high school career. And that's an increase from where we were several years ago. It's been rising every single year. The other piece of that is the bottom statistic, where you really look at, for example, in 2012, 88% of our students are earning threes, fours, and fives overall across all the AP exams. And the AP, the College Board would tell you that that's really a high number. They shoot for 70. And so, because if you've got about 70% of your students, they figure you have a wide range of target audience. We have a very narrow band, and so what that tells us is that when we get more students in our AP courses who take the test, who maybe aren't traditional AP students, that it's a stretch for them, we're not going to have a problem in terms of maintaining the high number of students who do well on those tests. Because remember what happened years ago when every junior started to take the ACT, our scores looked like they dropped a little bit, when you get an entire population taking it versus your top students who are college-bound. That same effect would happen for us as well. But we're not concerned about what would happen when we get more kids in. We are pretty pleased with, even with the fact of a declining enrollment over the past several years, going from 3,200 students to 2,980, that we still see a similar percentage of students taking the test and doing quite well on it, as a matter of fact. I believe that that 88% overall is the highest in South High history. Next slide. Now, the tests are wonderful pieces of information, but in addition to that, there's some other kinds of outcomes and outgrowths. Our AP language course, which is a relatively new junior-level AP course within the past several years, we're extremely pleased to see the number of tests being taken each year, which goes up every single year, and no matter how many tests we give, we're in the middle to high 90s in terms of students getting threes, fours, and fives. In fact, in 2010, one student didn't get a three, four, or five of those 73. So we're very confident, once again, that when we encourage other students, perhaps in years to come, when our avid students are taking an AP course at the junior level, we're going to still see our kids score in the high 90s. We're very happy. It really means that our curriculum is tightly aligned with the AP standards and with the test. We're very pleased about that. We were thrilled to have five semifinalists and eight commended students this year, and every year, we have a substantial number of students who are commended or who are semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. This year, we have an outstanding student who's African-American, not making it to the next level of participation, but certainly recognized for his national standing among the top 3% of students. You know, we had several perfect 36 scores, and frankly, that's a glass ceiling, and so it's very unusual to see anyone score 36. In fact, I think the College Board is not really happy when a student score 36. It's supposed to be unattainable. So both North and South High School have students that from time to time score 36. This is quite unusual for us to have that many in one year. And then Mustang Team Night is something for students who are struggling, and we've mentioned it briefly in the past, but now we've- mentioned it briefly in the past, but now we've honed it to where we know that we're talking to freshman parents whose students are earning a D or an F, close to the quarter. In October, we talk about strategies for how to keep yourself afloat and how to improve what you're doing. In fact, we'll have that October eighteenth meeting for our incoming, for our freshmen that night. And we're focused on Project Chris Strategies, Home Access Center, and how do you read the grade book in different courses. In December, we'll talk to students and parents about how do you prepare for finals? And in February, we'll meet with anyone who has actually failed a class, and it changes, our invitation list changes every time we offer one of these. I failed something, so now what do I do? How do I recover? So those are ways in which we try to get our students to improve what they're doing and focus on, excuse me, on success.
Terrific.
Well, since both schools are doing very similar, very good things, and share similar type data from North that Steve shared from South, and I want to echo, when we look at our P S E and our E pass data, that to us is much more significant, because these are kids who have been in our system for a while and working with our teachers and going through our curriculum. And so for me, what's really significant, and I think indicative of the good work that's happening at North, is you look at the GEM scores, and each year, there's an increased percentage, and the current senior class, class of two thousand thirteen, had a explored A C T growth of thirty-eight point seven-two. So we're seeing significant growth in our students who are with us for multiple testing times, and that percentage is increasing each year. So we're really pleased about that data. For our A P enrollment, we're seeing very similar type data. We're seeing an increase in the number of students taking A P courses. And if you look at two thousand and twelve, looking at thirty-four point two percent of our student population. In addition to the increase in the number of tests taken, are the increased percentages of tests or students earning a three, four, or five. In two thousand and twelve, eighty-five point five is North's highest percentage of tests earning a three, four, or five. And I think what's most significant, in two thousand and twelve, we also had the highest number of students taking an A P exam. So at the same point, we're increasing the number of kids taking an exam, we're seeing the percentage of three, fours, or five also increasing. And the number of students who took an A P exam last year at North, not only was their highest, but that was a seventy-five percent increase from the number of students who took A P exams in two thousand and two, or two thousand and six, rather. So we're seeing, you know, significant increases over time with the number of students taking advantage of that curriculum. Similar type of good news pieces from North, we had seven semifinalists and fifteen commended students with the National Merit Scholarship Program. And I apologize, I also forgot to list that we had one national Hispanic recognition scholar as well. To break down some of our A P growth in a couple of different areas, in our A P English Language, you'll see that we've increased the number of students who took the exam in two thousand and twelve from seventy-nine, in two thousand and nine it was twenty-seven. And yet, the percentage of scores of three, four, or five are very similar. So again, we're not, we're seeing a growth in the number of kids taking the exams, but the same very high and positive results. Also, in our A P Calc, A B, in two thousand and nine, we had fifty-two students take it, in two thousand and twelve, ninety-four, and both years, there's eighty-one percent of the three, four, or five. Our Parent University Program is a program that grew in terms of participants greatly last year, a number of parents attending these programs. We, in our last session, had over three hundred parents attending, and a lot of our staff's been working very closely with the parents to offer opportunities for parents that are meaningful for them and help them in terms of working with the school and working with their sons or daughters. During the course of the year, for our Parent University Programs, we provided information on topics such as our Positively North Program, our Strive Tutoring Program, and other type of interventions and supports available for students. We had a professional parent coach come in and talk to the parents about communication and conflict resolution, working with their teenage children, not that you ever need things like that or anything, but I think they found it very interesting. We had a presentation about substance abuse, and a very personal story from a D H S student whose brother passed away due to substance abuse. And then a College Prep One-O-One Program for the parents, that was, again, very popular. This year, we're kind of retooling our Parent University Program, now that we're working with Al Cleveland and his PLAN program. We want to see how we can kind of integrate those two things together, and with the addition of our new college counselor, that's an added resource and piece. So a meeting with parents next, our parent committee next week, to look at how we want to, might integrate what we do with Parent University with some of our new programs as well. So we're excited about what we're going to do with that. Speaking of new programs, one of our new programs this year is Project Twenty Eighteen. Twenty Eighteen is significant for the students who are currently juniors, who are part of Project Twenty Eighteen. Our goal for them is to obviously not just graduate high school, but to enroll and graduate from a four-year college, which would be in the year Twenty Eighteen. So hence the name. The students who are in the program, there's fifty students in the program, were identified as sophomores based on a number of factors, students who were in free and reduced lunch program. We did have a focus on our minority students, parents who did not attend college, students with a GPA ranging from two-point-oh to three-point-oh, and we also looked at the retired A C T scores that they took in April. This is kind of an offshoot of what we'll be doing with Avid, but we wanted to get something started now. The students work, meet twice a month, either during their fourth or fifth period, and they do a number of different things related to goal-setting and looking at college as an option for them after high school. Today, they were working with our College and Career Counselor, taking inventory called Do What You Are. I had the opportunity to sit in with the kids who are taking that interest inventory and helping them to learn to set goals, to connect their interests with possible careers or colleges. On October sixteenth, the group is going to I S U. We're taking the I S U's, are going to meet with admissions officers, take a tour of the campus, get a sense of what that process is like, and just to be on a college campus to see, to see how that feels and how that looks, and for them to envision themselves as being part of that. So it's an exciting program. The kids are voluntarily attending. We have four different staff members working with them. We think this is going to be very much of an asset for them as they look at their post-high school plans.
Well, you've heard a little bit about the African-American School of Success meetings we had last spring. What I thought you'd find interesting tonight is to hear a little bit about the information about what's happened since. In that night, we had forty-eight families represented, about eighty-six parents and students attended that evening. We had forty-seven parents volunteer to continue helping us with brainstorming and planning and implementation, which we were very happy with. We had over forty faculty members volunteer to work that night and to help us subsequently. What ended up happening was we made, we asked parents of our current African-American students to make phone calls to incoming freshman African-American students. And they offered just mentorship and answered questions and told them the packets that were coming and explained what they would see and what to do with it, and left their phone numbers for help over the summer. It was positively received by most of the people that we called. We actually recruited about thirty African-American students, upperclassmen, to be leaders at Mad Dash, which is our entry for incoming freshmen, the Saturday before school, a couple Saturdays before school, so that we would have kids coming in feeling like they were at home, a little more than they have in the past. And then we did videotape a parent and student panel responding to some questions that members of the staff and I created, asking them, what has your experience at South High been like? And although we would like to have had a broader section of students and parents represented, we dealt with who we had. And so it was probably a smaller version of the entire population, but we're showing the videotape to our faculty. And every department saw it in their department meetings and completed a survey tool at the end as a debriefing. The information I get from that will be used in October forum, where we'll have some dialogue sessions, talk about what everyone thought. And we'll be showing to support staff as well in the month of October. So the entire faculty will have been sensitized a little bit to some of the issues that students and parents feel. And as we move forward, we'll see where it goes, because we'll do some planning and decide where we head with it afterwards. I can already tell you that the staff has a different point of view than they had about a month ago, as to what they should be aware of and think of and watch for. And even the teachers who report, this isn't about me, say, you know, I wonder if I should just, you know, pay more attention to this. So that was the goal, was to heighten awareness, and I think we've been successful with that. So you'll hear more about that throughout the year, I'm sure.
And a final piece in terms of the outreach is a outcropping of the African-American Success Forum was the establishment of the Parent Leadership Academy Network. And this is taking place district-wide. We tapped a consultant named Al Cleveland, who is working primarily, I would say, with our African-American families, to give them the kinds of tools that they need, and also to give them a sense of ownership and partnership with the school district to advance our student learning. And so there's a series of monthly workshops that he has, everything from how to learn the tech-savvy piece, which is one of the issues that arose from the African-American Success Forum, to how to work with your teenager, how to interpret the grade pieces, how to interpret all the data sets that we've given you so it makes sense for them, and then how to empower them to how to navigate the American school system as well. In fact, on Saturday, he had taken a busload along with our Jen Martinez, our, the Hispanic parent outreach individual, too. College of DuPage was having an African-American Hispanic forum. And so we brought around thirty, thirty-plus parents to that, and it was very well attended. And I look forward to finding out what their takeaway was from that as well. So again, it's a combination of student, it's a combination of teacher and administrator, it's a combination of parent to bring it all together to help kids advance. So having said that, the final note, you've heard about the performance summary, hopefully you are, is pleasantly supportive of what we've done, but we realize that we can always continuously improve, and we will continue to work on that. That is definitely linked with the district strategic plan, so we want to stay the course. We've had some good work done, and we want to continue that. We're recognizing that there are strategic approaches, it's not just kind of Harry Carey how we're approaching the kinds of implementations, and funding follows as well. We're looking at data-driven decision-making as well. And then you'll see the last three bullets, they're the same three bullets as I had last year, because guess what? N C L B still hasn't been reauthorized. Common Core implementation is coming fast and furiously, and we recognize for Twenty First Century College and Career Skills, technology integration is essential. So, have any questions?
I have one. Often, what I do for a living, I end up being asked to find, ask questions about things that might need some attention and not focus too much on all the fantastic things that have been done. So this is definitely one of those cases where I hate to even ask a question that I'm going to ask, but, because it's all so, I mean, everything's fabulous, the direction we're going and all these programs. But looking at the district A C T trends chart, it looked to me like the last, say, four years or so, there really hasn't been much change there. Is that correct? If we look at reading, we look at the percentage of students nineteen or lower, and the percentage of students twenty or higher, there really, there hasn't been a whole lot of movement there. Is that a cause for concern at all?
I think in terms of moving more students up to that higher range is important. I think some of the work that we're continuing to do, for example, the literacy study that we had done last year, one of the recommendations was to bring together the literacy coaches from both sides of the district to share and really investigate, using data-driven decision-making strategically, how that can take place. That meeting had just occurred last week, they were energized, and going forward, they're planning on meeting three additional times. So I think that's precisely the kind of piece that they will take a look at. Additionally, with the testing now with freshmen as well as sophomores in terms of performance series and that literacy assessment, we're looking at pre and post tests. And as a result of that, one of the suggestions was to, and this will be coming in front of the board, a proposal for another tier of a literacy support course. So it's not just, in beginning and advance, there's also an intermediate to push kids up to the next level. So looking at that, it's good news, but we can still do more, and those are some of the conversations that are currently taking place.
I guess I would say, too, Mike, in the last three years, each year, we've added additional freshman courses that are reading outside of English, so that in many cases now, if a student's coming into one of our schools under grade level in reading, they're actually getting de facto double block because they have an English course and they have a reading course. Additionally, the Read One Eighty program is supposed to take readers who are extremely low and push them up. My guess is that, and we'll see, but my guess is some of those interventions haven't affected the scores yet because these are tests for juniors. And so I would expect that we see a change soon. You know, there's also the issue, are we teaching the courses correctly? And those are all things we need to work on. But we have invested a lot in providing additional reading support. And I would, finally, I would say that we still have the issue of where the kids come in, and how much value can we add to them? And I'm not sure if we looked at, went back and looked at their explore scores for these groups, I don't know, I don't, frankly, don't know what the explore scores were in reading. But my guess is they haven't been trending way up. They've been pretty flat, too. And so these are all, and we should benefit from the Common Core curriculum that's going to happen at the elementary school districts as well. Because the kids should be able, most kids should walk in the door having a higher level of reading as a result of those programs.
Question. Speaking of those programs, are they underway in the grade schools right now, or are we?
They are underway, but they are at different levels of implementation.
That was my understanding, okay.
But they're, within a period of time.
We'll all get there.
Well, they all have to get there.
Right, right. Got it. Oh, I'm sorry, I had another question. I think you answered it, though. I was wondering if we're going to have the same emphasis for our Hispanic students as we've been very welcome emphasis for our African-American students?
Most definitely. Most definitely. Through the Title III grant, which Avid referred, that deals specifically with our English Language learners, and there is a parent outreach component with that. And so that's something that we currently are doing. And in fact, with the PLAN piece, Al has met with Jennifer to share some types of strategies and elements for that parent outreach. So that has been a very nice sharing of information.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Is it possible in the future, I had this from a parent, looking at the overall big-picture thing, looking at the goal, can we look at some statistics or data that show how many of our students are applying to two- and four-year colleges, have been accepted, are in fact enrolled, so that we can actually see the end product, at least for our district students?
We can have that information for the next workshop, I think. Okay, anybody else?
Good stuff.
Yeah. Okay. Move on to the next item on our agenda, Board meeting packets. Yes. And this is somewhat of a personal issue for me, but I just, I wanted the opportunity to discuss this one more time. And I may be mistaken about all this, but this is my perception. When the board had my evaluation and its self-evaluation on the same night, during the board's self-evaluation, I recall the board directed me to provide a list of strategies for making our mission meetings more efficient. It was my, but I did not understand, and I understood after the fact, because Bill Attia told me this when I called him about another issue, that I was also supposed to plan about how to get the packets to the board sooner. And when we had the discussion at the September workshop, I'll admit I was not prepared for that, because I didn't, had not had that heads-up from Dr. Attia. Neither were Neither were, you know, some of my colleagues in the room prepared for it. So after I talked to Dr. Atia, and I did bring it up for discussion both last week and this week in our administrative meeting. And I may have a misconception about what the board wanted me to do, and probably, I would say, I might is probably not the right word. I do have a, I'm not quite sure what the board really wants me to do. And I will try to comply with what the board wants me to do, but there are some issues. One, financial report would be an example. The reports, the timing for that report is based on our, you know, billing schedule, which we establish when we make contracts. And in order to pay people on time, we, the board, has to approve those bills on time for the payments. We have an outside treasurer, so that, it takes some time for that person to review our books. And all this has been coordinated before in a pattern. If we're going to provide that report to the board early, we've got to make some significant changes, and there's a chance that those might be expensive, at least in the short term. There are times when the personnel report, it's really important that the personnel report is as timely as possible, so that we could give you a personnel report. We can advance, but we may want to alter it up even up to the day of the board meeting because, again, it's a timing issue. If we sign a person to a contract, they wouldn't be officially employed for another six weeks if that's not approved by the board at that time. There are certainly times of the year when, especially during the staffing part, and sometimes in the summer, where it's absolutely essential that we hold that report as long as possible because of the changes that could occur in it. And there are clearly things that we could give the board in advance. If we're finished with them, there's no reason for us to sit on them. They could go on board docs. You know, one example was brought up about the, like, the district goals, and honestly, that report took a long time to put together because, you know, we started with a draft, we shared that, we vetted it with everyone who was going to have a leadership role in it. We changed it multiple times based on that input. So, you know, it wasn't sitting in the hopper long before, long before the meeting simply because we wanted to make sure we got as much input as possible about it. So I understand that your interest in serving the community is to have as much information and as much in advance as possible so that you have the time to look at it thoroughly, you're not rushed in the meeting to make a decision. The problem is, for me, there's a balance between our operations and that need. So if you were to say to me, "Any reports you can get us early, please do that, we'll be fine with it, we can work on that situation." If you're going to say, you know, laterally, "We have to have that packet a week early," that's going to be problematic for us. And so that's really what I wanted to review tonight.
Well, I think looking at it is, for me especially, if you've got three reports that are, you know, 10 or 15 pages each, coming at us on Thursday night, you know, I'll be honest with you, that's very difficult for me to get that processed in my fashion by Friday to ask questions, because I just, you know, to clarify things or to ask you questions about things. And I hate to push that to Monday because then I feel like that's putting you guys under the gun to answer my questions or whatever on a short period of time. So I think that, I think that, you know, if it's going to be, you know, several large documents, if we could get them...
Thank you.
As early as possible. Yes, yes. It doesn't have to all be a week in advance. You know what I'm saying?
The October board meeting, we have a document to, for the board to approve, the district improvement plan. We also have the district Title I plan. Those are close to being finished. We can send, we can post those on board docs within a couple days.
That would be great.
Okay? That we can do.
Right, and I think that that's where I think a lot of us were coming from, is that we want to be able to digest it and ask questions, not put you under pressure to have them answered within an hour or so.
Let me ask this specific question. Does anybody have a problem with the vendors or the personnel report coming on Thursday evening?
No.
We're talking about more of the larger narratives.
Correct.
So the vendors' reports and the personnel reports, I think, no one has a problem. Get those to Thursday evening. But it's going to be, if there's a 15-page document, you know, that's much more narrative-informed, maybe with charts and data and stuff that we have to look at.
Or even some of the reports that we had tonight, you know, that we can get those in a nice day, so we can ask good questions instead of just waiting here. You know, tonight, I thought was perfect. We didn't have to go screen by screen by screen because we had seen it, you know, and it wasn't lengthy as well. Thank you for that. And it was just easy to digest, and I think if we could have some of those things, I think that's what we're looking for.
Right.
I think mostly just within reason. I don't think we expect to alter things dramatically and put more work for you guys, but more to be able to make more intelligent decisions and get things more on a timely basis, if that's possible. If it's not, then that's the way it goes.
Okay.
Well, and I think in the past, when we used to get our packets delivered to us, we had to wait until absolutely everything was all done because they had to be driven to our house.
Correct.
Now, I think as things become completed by your staff, you can just add them onto our board docs, even if it's, you know, it's a little bit here and there, and then by that Thursday, everything is in by that final date. But we could have some things that drizzle in a little bit before, gives us some time to digest, and I think that's perfect. I think that's what we were all actually shooting for.
I did have one question. Loading them in piece by piece as they're ready, is that an added burden to the staff or is it fairly easy to do?
I think the load is pretty easy. They're all electronic. Joanne is a pro at it.
I know.
If Comcast works.
As long as, yeah. It was problematic last week.
We had to remember how to deliver the packets.
Mike had to remember where we all live.
But I think that's what we were, I think that's what we were asking for.
Okay. More questions for us, or is that? I understand now.
Okay, cool.
Good, excellent. Okay, item 4C, discussion regarding board member request to discuss policy 6.80. Well, Mr. White, Mike, Mr. Davenport has asked that the board discuss policy 6.80. The procedure for having an item added to the agenda for discussions is initially that the board member making the request has a written, provides a written reason, and that then the policy is sent to the rest of the, really, the policy, the item is sent to the rest of the board. And then at the next workshop meeting, there's the discussion about whether the board wants to discuss it at a meeting. So this, we're following the policy 2.20 in this regard. So that's really what this item is about. All right, do I go first?
To speak to whether or not we should add this to...
The future agenda.
Future agenda. Yeah, I, the reason I brought this up is because of all the hundreds of emails we all received from both, few in district and mostly out of district regarding Constitution Day and presentation at North High. I, of course, was a little concerned, as I know several other board members probably were as well, and staff certainly, that we had something happening that had some national stature to it, and certainly should have had some expectation that there could be some people in the community that might question or, and so the idea being that we might want to be better prepared to, for those things. And by no means am I suggesting that we don't want controversial, I mean, this is what it's, you know, this is what education's all about, and I'm certainly always welcome to hear differing points of view. It helps, it either makes my beliefs stronger or it allows me to reexamine my beliefs. So I understand that the presentation that happened at North was completely what we as staff had expected, and it was a good presentation, and we're well satisfied with that. So going forward, just, I had some concern about how we go about the chain of command, managing these sorts of things.
Process, right.
And suggested that possibly policy might be some way, a way to look at that. I'm certainly open to suggestions from staff, and I know that you have some suggestions from staff. And I do, I do think, I would like to see a change to some of the language here, but it's more in the terms of a deletion versus adding anything to this. So I'd still like to see this discussed for future meetings.
Other thoughts?
Is this an appropriate question? I understood the policy committee, do you not feel that it was necessary? Is there, or am I wrong about that, to look at?
To review it?
Well, that's not really relevant to whether the board as a whole...
Right, I wondered, okay.
So you look at it, it's just, because there's really two things. I see two issues here. Whether we want to change the board policy or whether we want to discuss how the administration has implemented the existing policy without changes. And those are separate questions, both of which are legitimate agenda items.
But both of them, both of them will come up during discussion.
Right, exactly. So even though, I think, I think basically Nancy and I agree, she can interrupt if I get this right, didn't see much need to change the board policy, but that didn't mean that we didn't believe there weren't issues worth discussing in terms of how the policy is implemented. Because there was another sort of companion policy about making sure parents are notified about the types of curriculum that's going to be foregoing, you know, that's going to go on, whether the administration has carried out the policy. Doesn't necessarily mean we want to change our, the board's policy, but doesn't mean that we want to make sure we have a shared understanding of what's going to happen as to...
Kind of like getting a sense then of the board of where we're at to make directions or...
Right.
So as a consequence, I guess to circle back to Mrs. Beckman's original question, the fact that Ms. Cupkin and I did not think it was necessary to change the board policy does not mean this is not an important subject to talk about.
That was my question, really.
Because we can talk about how it's implemented as well as what the language of the policy says. But if there's strong suggestions we should change the language of the board policy, let's bring that up, too.
And that would, so that putting it on the agenda at a future meeting would be really to discuss how the board wants to handle it.
With two separate, you know, well, at least two, there could be more.
At least two, maybe more, who knows? Okay.
Other thoughts?
I personally don't see a problem with this particular policy, but as it relates to the issue that we just had, this does not cover speakers, guests that would come into the classroom, this particular 6.8. And so my concern would be the one that Mr. White just raised, and that is, what is the parental notification? What is the notification of department chairs toward assistant principals and building principals? And I think that was, I think the thing that we're primarily concerned with as a board.
Yeah, what do you think?
Because there was no opt-out option. There was no, I mean, I don't know what the parental notification was in this particular case. I don't think that was really well-specified, but was there an option to opt-out? Was there truly balance? I mean, just because an organization like the Citizen Advocacy Center, and Elmhurst said that they had two attorneys willing and able to talk about it, I don't know if that was fair enough because they're the ones who brought the speaker into the first place. So I think there were some issues with that. But I don't think this particular policy really addresses that. I think that falls more under, what is our policy for guest speakers in the classroom?
Nancy and Terry get a chance to speak.
Well, is that, is that policy, you didn't, you didn't give us that policy, right? The one on...
The one you asked about was this one?
Just this one?
I would think those school-sponsored presentations...
It's kind of...
Would be in there?
And discussions.
I would agree. I read it that school-sponsored presentation would include an outside speaker. So is your suggestion that outside, all presentations with outside speakers weren't parental notification?
I'm saying that most high schools will have parental notification when it comes to guest speakers, things like films that come in that are showed curriculum-wise. Those things are covered broadly under probably a different section than this. I think that, and I did not see whether or not we do have a separate policy on guest speakers, but I think it would tighten it up for us and would be probably a little bit more appropriate for us. That's something that I would support.
So you're suggesting bring that policy forward also?
If it does not, I'd have to ask Dr. McDonald if that policy already exists regarding guest speakers or anything like that.
Honestly, Mr. Mattoon, I believe we would lump guest speakers into 6.80. That the provision of a program, that having the speaker there last week would have fallen into that, that's what I would presume.
Because I know historically, it's been loosely tied into the curriculum and, which has the, you know, the domain of department chairs and approval that way. So I think that's traditionally how it's been done. But I think where the loophole was in this was in parental notification and allowing parents to know, hey, this is exactly what's going to be happening so that you're aware of it. And I think that's what a lot of, you know, the emails that came to us, I think were focused on, besides the content. I didn't have a problem with the content, but I could see why they might be, have a problem with the notification aspect, especially if our building principal was not aware of what was going on. I think that's a severe problem.
Nancy, did you want to say something more before I...
Well, you know, I understand what you're saying. I somewhat struggle with this in terms of, at what point do you notify parents about content in a classroom?
Right.
We have, we all have different ideas about what is appropriate and inappropriate. I think it would be difficult to expect that anything that could be deemed controversial be, a note be sent home to parents, because I would imagine my daughter would be coming home with 12 notes a day. And I would hope that we would support our educators. I mean, when you think back, I'm going to go off track a little bit here, but when you think back to why tenure was originally brought onto the academic scene, it was to protect educators from outside influence so that they could cover controversial issues, so they could teach, teach from a platform of open ideas and expression. And I would hate to see us try to limit that or cross Ts and dot Is for things that could be offensive to some people, while when in fact, our educators are given the platform to talk about subjects in a very safe environment.
I agree with that, but I, but when you take it a step, it goes a step further when you introduce somebody who is a non-certificated person who comes in to speak about their level of expertise. The law program at North and South regularly brings in guest speakers, judges, attorneys, things like that. But there, that has been approved through the curriculum over a number of years. That is not necessarily controversial, but parents are made aware, either through course syllabus or through other things, open house curriculum nights, that there will be guest speakers, here's what you can expect. I'm looking at this more of a proactive situation where children who are 14 to 18, their parents are made aware, because they're not yet adults in the eyes of the law, are made aware that we will have guest speakers who are non-certificated by the state of Illinois making a presentation, and this is what you, as parents and your students, can expect out of this. And this is why we're doing it as part of, you know, curriculum-based decisions. So I don't think it's necessarily challenging why are they doing it, it's more, we want you to be aware.
And let me remind everybody, the purpose of this this evening is to decide whether we're going to add it to the agenda, not to put it in the parent's agenda or issue. And it sounds like there's strong sentiment, at least some strong, at least a significant portion, majority of that, I'm not sure, but a strong sentiment in discussing it.
But I think it was a good point, though, to bring out that it's not covered. That part is not covered in the policy, that there is not another part of the policy that would cover that.
Talk about parental notification.
Absolutely.
If I might, if I might just add, I'm, I've had some discussion with staff, I've made some inquiries, and you've probably seen some of my emails. So I have much more I could say about this, and I think that we probably all do. I'm, I'm pretty confident going forward that staff's going to be able to address this from a procedural standpoint, and that we really aren't going to need to do anything from a policy standpoint. But by having it on the agenda for a future discussion would allow staff to speak to that, and I think that there's probably already been some adjustments made and such. And so I'd like staff to have that opportunity to speak to that and then have us, have us move on from there. So I would encourage the rest of the board's support of having this as a future agenda item.
Let me ask, as far as...
Let me ask, as far as defining the topic of discussion, I've just written down the words parental notification of curriculum content. Does that pretty much summarize what we're looking for?
I think, I think you might want to tighten it up more as, as it relates to outside or guest speakers coming into the class.
You know, but, but though even like film classes were as planned ahead of time, they may want them to know what's in it.
Um, I guess I look at it kind of like Nancy does. It would greatly disappoint me that we give our-
We're going to beg.
Our-
Right.
Our parents the, the opportunity, I guess, to opt out of things that they're not quite sure that they know what the discussion is going to be and that our students miss out on the opportunity to discuss some of these important issues that are going to come up in their lives. You know, whether it be religion, you know, same-sex marriage, all, all of those are very, I know, controversial, but I don't think the policy's-
I want to dive in on this.
What I would say, though, our purpose this evening is not to resolve the question-
I know, I know, but-
-but to decide whether we want to discuss it.
Right.
Which we already are doing.
So we're, we are kind of crossing the line, but we have to cross the line a little bit to the side, but, you know, but, but basically, it is parental notification, right? And that's, and there's different ways of parsing that out, but that's real, more what we're looking at. Is that, am I missing anything on that?
I'm not talking about opting out. I'm talking about parental notification, plain and simple.
Right.
This is what, this is who's coming in, these are their professional credentials, this is why we're bringing them in. I didn't say anything about opting out, although they may want to. It's, it's a parent's right. It's also a parent's right, if they want to sit in the classroom, they can do that too.
Sure.
You know, so, but, but I think there should be some, I would, I would like to see some discussion to be able to talk about that language.
Does staff want anything on this discussion?
I, I guess I don't, I don't, we often provide parent notification on things that we believe that someone may have an issue with. I have no problem at all doing that. It does not say that in the policy, I agree. I think the point that, at some level or, or another, that it's still a, a judgment called by somebody, whether notification is needed or not, you can, you can certainly fail on the conservative side and do notify them sometimes when you really don't need to. But I think that, you know, I think what we've, what we've tried to put in place in the last week is just a more rigorous system for doing that or checking it. Now, whether that, that also needs a policy component to it is, I guess that's a question for the board. But I don't, honestly, I, I think parent notification is good. I mean, we, President Obama did not do this this year, the past three years, as he's made it back to school speech. There are parents that want to make, us to make every student listen to it. There are parents that don't want their students to listen to it. Okay? And then there are, majority of the parents are fine if their kids listen to it and assume they will.
They don't really care.
Okay? So we, we try to accommodate those needs if we can.
Yeah. Part of the discussion can be whether these guidelines exist at the administrative level, you know, whether we're content with that. You know, so I'm not sensing much pushback against the idea of talking about it.
Well, and I guess maybe I'm thinking, maybe that is a request to go to the policy committee to look at that policy and maybe make any adjustments and then bring that back to us with the discussion.
Well, as a member of the policy committee, I kind of want to know what you all think before I go try to write something.
But I think that, but I think that we can give input to you about that-
During that time.
Before.
Really?
And, and bring wording to us. I don't know, maybe I'm-
If I, I don't, that's, the problem with that, Terry, is the policy committee's already reviewed it again.
Oh, they have? Okay.
They reviewed it. They met last week, they reviewed it again.
Oh, that part I didn't get.
The policy committee, if I'm, if I'm speaking out of turn, will both tell me, I'm sure. They don't feel compelled at this point to change it.
Right.
So really, the board, if, if the board wants to change it, that really, I think that's a discussion the board has to have, not direct, because of the, if you're going to direct it to the policy committee at this point, I think what the policy committee has said is, this is, we think this is sufficient to, to meet our needs.
Which doesn't mean that we don't believe that there shouldn't have been more sensitivity shown to one or another specific case. It's just that we don't need a board policy. There may be more understanding, you know, which are different things.
Right. Because I think one, one, I don't know of a question or one concern, I think, is that in those instances, like when you were talking about whether it be the president's speech or whatever, everyone is on the same page. You know about that. I think in this particular instance, I don't know, I don't know where it comes in, into play, where department chairs or where the curriculum, where you don't know as a superintendent or the principal doesn't know what speakers are coming into, into our high school. And I think that was, that was somewhat of a concern of mine, I think, just to ward, you know, some of that, you know, some of that, some of that off. And I suppose that would be something that we would-
But if that's already been addressed.
Do we need a vote to put this on the agenda or can we?
I'm inclined to say, I think, I think there's, there's the, the strong majority put it on the agenda.
I think we just need consensus.
And I can put it on the agenda, so.
That's true.
If we could do that, because I, like I said, there's, there's a lot I'd like to say too, but I'm-
One thing, though, I might not mind knowing if there's a way of figuring out how many guest speakers we have. I'm sure there's a great many non-controversial ones. My brother came and talked to the physics class, and I'm sure, hopefully, that was totally non-controversial. But that's, you know, but, but, I mean, I mean, there's probably large numbers of people we don't even know about, which is totally, not a problem.
Which is fine.
But we just don't know, which may, maybe we don't need to know.
So my son is going to be a guest speaker for driver ed.
And I have no problem with that.
Because he's done research on auto accidents.
Oh, really? Oh, I think we need to go hear that.
No, but not names, but numbers, you know, just, you know, maybe, maybe not.
Just to clarify, the issue, the issue at hand is only outside speakers? Or is this other pieces of curriculum?
Parental notification of curriculum content, really, is it outside speaker?
Parental knowledge of curriculum.
Or is it outside speakers? That's, I agree. I'm, I'm not sure if it's-
The outside speaker was obviously the, the motivation for-
Catalyst.
Yeah, catalyst, but-
Curriculum has obviously been approved at some way down the line and somewhere down the line, so that's not the issue because there are, there have been, there are, and there will be controversial topics that are discussed. The issue is who comes into our classroom-
Gets to know.
-to inculcate or to discuss these topics that are non-certificated? And who approves them? And who do we, I mean, who knows about them?
We can maybe leave it sort of vague between the two, but with focus on outside speakers. Anybody have any problem going forward with that?
And then maybe by the time we have this discussion, at some point in the future, we'll have some information from the administration of what's already been done.
And then if the focus is on the parental, put the parental notification component and whether, and again, I, I repeat, there's two possibilities here. There's policy committee language and there's a sense of the board with how they want unchanged current policy to be implemented, which are not necessarily the same question. Anything else?
That's good.
Okay. Reception to visitors. There's our representative from Patch, which is wishy-washy to us. You're the only, you're the only one here, other than the-
Smart woman.
-our principals who've already spoken and the camera guy. Any announcements or anything we have to do before we adjourn?
Don't forget, Friday night is the North homecoming event. I would like to see as many board members there, because there were only-
Have a good time Friday.
There were only two of us at the last one for South High.
It was fun.
And it was a very nice occasion, and we had quite a few staff members.
It's pretty well attended.
Yes, yes, yes.